Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. On behalf of the members of the School Board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We do have one member of the School Board who wishes to participate in our meeting electronically. As indicated, in Board Policy BE, there's an extra E there, electronic participation in meetings from remote location, the Board Member must make such request, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the Board must approve the request by majority vote of the members present. School Board Member Rebecca Amon has made such a request. Ms. Amon?
Yeah, thank you Chairman Searl's Law. I request that I be allowed to participate remotely as I am out of town due to family obligations.
Thank you. And hearing Ms. Amon's request, what is the pleasure of the Board? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept Ms. Amon's request to participate electronically.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Four.
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 Four? Thank you so much. And Ms. Amon, we do realize that with our faulty weather and perhaps wherever you are, you may break in and out, but we are hoping that you'll be able to join us.
Thank you.
So we will begin tonight's meeting with invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Michelle Nordine, President of the Newport News Council of PTAs.
Thank you, Mrs. Searl's Law. Good evening Chairman, Chairman Searl's Law, Dr. Mitchell and School Board Members. Thank you for this invitation. What is it? Thank you for your invitation to give the invocation and pledge at tonight's meeting. Last year, I read a poem about teachers and parents working together to help a child be the best they can be. This year, I would like to pay homage to a group that is also interested in helping children at our school, at our, excuse me, also interested in helping our children at 25 to 32 of our schools. This group is our PTA volunteers. As teachers, staff, and students gear up for the upcoming year, PTA volunteers are also busy planning events for students and families. Without these dedicated volunteers, there would be no PTA. Even if you can only volunteer for one hour a year, you are a PTA volunteer. Excuse me. That hour will be appreciated because it may give the PTA Board a much-needed break from trying to be in multiple places at once. Therefore, I would like to thank all past, current, and new PTA volunteers in advance for everything that you do and continue to do. I found this ode online and a lot of the PTA volunteers will be able to follow along with this one. P is for the patience that you show each time you come. T is for the time and effort that you give. A is for each act that shows us you care. V is for the very many things you do for us. O is for all the other things you do. L is for the long hours that you spend on PTA things. U is for the unending flyers that you print and distribute. N is for the nights and days you give up just for us. T is for the tearing, sorting, cutting, stapling, copying, and laminating that you do to help the teachers. E is for every food donation you buy. E is for the events you carefully plan for all the students. R is for the respect that you deserve. S is for the support that you give the school. Put them all together and it spells PTA volunteers. Thank you for all that you do and that all you have planned to do this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's now time to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to working with you guys this year.
Ms. Nordine, we need to tell you thank you. You have been in this position for a while now. We're happy to see you coming back this second year. Thank you for all of your time and participation with our, with our parents. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is School Board recognition. So Dr. Mitchell, please join me at the podium. So this evening, we're going to begin our recognitions with the oath of commitment for our 2023-2024 Student Representative to the School Board, Erin Lynn. Mr. Lynn, please come forward to receive your oath of commitment. Your family members are welcome to join you if you would like. So before we begin, I'd like to introduce Mr. Lynn. Erin Lynn was elected to serve as this year's student representative by the Student Advisory Group on Education. It's also called our Sage Group, a cadre of high school students who serve as the superintendent's advisors. Mr. Lynn is a rising senior at Woodside High School where he co-founded Students Say. He is a member of the Archery Club and the Math and Music Honor Societies. A talented musician, he is a member of the Williamsburg Youth Orchestra and serves as student ambassador. Do you have time for us? I'm hoping so. This year, he was one of 300 students nationally selected to participate in the Bank of America Student Leader Program in Washington DC. In April, Mr. Lynn received a William &amp; Mary Leadership Award for being a role model for volunteerism and leadership. Wow. Mr. Lynn, as School Board Chair, I have the honor and privilege of leading your oath of commitment. So please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Erin Lynn, do solemnly affirm that I will support the mission of Newport News Public Schools. And I will faithfully perform my duties as the student representative to the School Board. Perform my duties. Very good. I will attend School Board meetings. And participate in Board functions. I will serve as the facilitator to the Superintendent Student Advisory Group on Education. I will contribute to School Board discussions. I will strive to fulfill the responsibilities of this position while excelling in my studies. Okay, that was real important. According to the best of my abilities. Awesome. Mr. Lynn, congratulations and welcome to the School Board. Would you, would you like to offer some comments now or wait until the end of the School Board meeting at the normal comment time? Okay, well, please take your seat among us. We appreciate that. We'll make you come down in a little while to take some pictures with us. So on for our recognitions this evening. We have some very, very special people among us this evening. The School Board also has the honor of recognizing and thanking the Newport News Police Department for their dedication and their support of our students and our staff. So if I can get the following to join us up here. Police Chief Steve Drew. Assistant Chief Brandon Creswell. Assistant Chief Eric Hires. Captain Allison Afunyok. Lieutenant Karen Allen. Sergeant Michael Gross. Sergeant Alexis Ortiz. School Resource Officer James Booth. School Resource Officer Lonnie Fitzer. School Resource Officer Erin Watkins. School Resource Officer Isaiah Washington. I will read quickly because it looks like we have most of the NNPD behind me. And that is exactly what we do have. We have NNPD behind us here in Newport News Public Schools, and this is why they're here tonight. So thank you all. We are presenting a resolution of commendation and appreciation presented to the Newport News Police Department, and it reads in part, "Whereas the dedicated members of the Newport News Police Department serve and protect our citizens and take a leading role in making the city of Newport News a place where people want to live, work, and play. And whereas the mission of the Newport News Police Department is to reduce crime and the fear of crime and enhance public safety and quality of life. And whereas, under the steadfast leadership of Chief Drew, the dedicated sworn officers and civilian personnel serve an integral role in our city and as such deserve respect and gratitude for their service. And whereas the Newport News Police Department is a faithful partner dedicated to supporting Newport News Public Schools students and staff. And whereas the Newport News Police Department provides up to 13 police officers who serve as school resource officers in our middle schools and high schools, fulfilling a vital role in promoting a safe school communities by assisting school administrators and staff in maintaining safety and order. And whereas sworn officers and civilians of the Newport News Police Department serve as lunch buddies, mentors, and role models for students. And whereas following several tragic events that impacted our school communities, the Newport News Police Department committed to ensuring the well-being, safety, and security of our students and staff by assisting students and staff on-site, evaluating safety and security measures, and increasing police presence and patrols. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board recognizes and commends this dedication and service of the Newport News Police Department. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Newport News School Board will include this in its minutes as an expression of appreciation for the Newport News Police Department for its support of our students, families, and staff. The resolution is signed by each member of the School Board. And to the officers, thank you for all you do every day to protect and serve our school community. Please join me in one more appreciation. Did you want to do a picture? Okay, we'll do a picture. Sounds good. And I am, I did request that we kill a few trees. I wanted the resolution printed for everybody on the force. So you all will be able to share that because I know that you have the support to do what you do for us. Board members, if you all can come down as well.
Oh, we just stand up?
Yeah, you can stand up. Yeah, you can stand up. Hopefully you'll be able, stand on your tippy toes. Did she go to the front? Okay, I'll come. And at this time, we will take a seven-minute break so that our honorees and their families may leave if they desire to do so. And during this time, our viewing audience will be able to enjoy this month's School Board Spotlight, and the meeting will resume following the Spotlight segment. Thank you so much.
Fifth graders at Discovery STEM Academy and Newsom Park Elementary spent a day on the water, exploring the beauty of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Thanks to a grant from Virginia's Department of Conservation and Recreation, Newport News Public Schools STEM Department partnered with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation to expand the learning experiences through the STEM magnet programs at DSA and Newsom Park. Each fifth-grade class in these two magnet programs enjoyed a meaningful watershed educational experience by learning in an outdoor classroom aboard the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's research vessel. While on the water, students learned firsthand about the importance of protecting the Chesapeake Bay watershed by testing the water quality, exploring habitats, and investigating some of the abundant sea life, all while overlooking historical locations that have significant ties to the river. Through these hands-on experiences, knowledge became tangible right before their eyes. Just spending time on a boat in the James River was a first-time experience for many of these students, whose understanding of the watershed was exponentially increased by this amazing and unique learning opportunity. For the 12th year, students from across the peninsula took part in the Youth Volunteer Corps of Hampton Roads 2023 Can Structure Competition. This annual contest motivates schools to collect canned goods and then build amazing structures using non-perishable food items. The theme this year was End Hunger, Game On, with many schools constructing video game or sporting structures. Of the 17 school teams that competed, 13 were from Newport News Public Schools. Elementary schools were able to build their canned structures at their own schools and were judged remotely based on video recordings. Middle and high schools were back at Patrick Henry Mall for the first time in three years. On a Saturday morning in late April, students used teamwork, creativity, and problem-solving to design and construct their game-themed creations, all on display for shoppers to see and enjoy. Newport News Schools won six of the eight trophies, including Saunders Elementary and Ella Fitzgerald Middle Schools winning top honors in their divisions. And Gildersleeve Middle was voted the fan favorite. Overall, the entire competition allowed students and schools to donate over 14,000 pounds of food and $800 to the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank, providing over 12,000 meals to families across the peninsula. For the second year, a community of golf enthusiasts joined together to support the students and educators in Newport News Public Schools. The Second Annual Golf Classic took place at the premier Kiln Creek Golf Club and Resort at the summer start. Teams consisted of community partners, business leaders, educators, avid golfers, and local high school student athletes. The annual event was organized by Newport News Public Schools, with proceeds benefiting the Newport News Education Foundation. The foundation's year-round support directly impacts student success by celebrating academic achievement, supporting a merit-based scholarship program, and offering grants to NNPS educators to elevate classroom learning experiences. Thanks to the generosity of sponsors and golfers, the Newport News Education Foundation will be further equipped to enrich the quality of teaching and learning in Newport News Public Schools. Community gardeners are planting seeds of knowledge for students across Newport News. In December, Newport News Master Gardeners Association announced four schools to receive their inaugural horticulture grants. Among these four recipients were three NNPS schools, Deer Park Elementary and Denby and Woodside High Schools. Each school was awarded $500 based on their applications to provide student-led projects that enhance horticultural awareness while improving the environment. This past spring, each school sprung into action, using their seed money to make their ideas blossom into reality. At Deer Park Elementary, students, educators, and families spent weekends and school days constructing pollinator-friendly raised garden beds. Kindergarten and first-grade classes took turns painting the beds before filling them with soil and planting native flora, many of which were donated by Deer Park's families to attract butterflies and bees. At Denby, students utilized the school's greenhouse to plant a range of delicious herbs straight from seed. Once the edible plants matured, they repotted the herbs in decorative pots just in time to present them as gifts on Mother's Day. And at Woodside, student leaders worked together to design a plan to beautify the front of the school with a gravel walkway surrounded by colorful blooming plants. On each campus, volunteers from Newport News Master Gardeners gladly donated their time, expertise, and resources to ensure each student-led project was a complete success. Students, families, and the community were invited to explore the wondrous world of STEM. For the first time since the global pandemic, Community STEM Day was back and bigger than ever. Co-hosted by Christopher Newport University and Newport News Public Schools, 6,500 guests enjoyed exploring, learning, and competing during the Saturday event. In CMU's Freeman Center, each Newport News school set up tables with hands-on learning activities to demonstrate how students explore STEM in the classroom. High school students also showcased their custom-built robots, which compete in annual challenges against other schools. Thirty-six community partners offered fun, interactive experiences for students to sample some of the possible careers available in STEM fields. Meanwhile, student teams from all grades were engaged in friendly competitions through Lego Robotics and Engineering Design Challenges. Riverside Elementary, the Elementary Virtual Learning Program, Heinz Middle, and Woodside High Schools were top winners in their design challenges, where students displayed creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving to build a solution to a real-world problem. Through these enriching experiences, a community explored the wealth of knowledge and opportunities available through STEM education.
Regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the School Board, and these opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates that your time is up. In a moment, as your name is called, I'd like for you to come forward. This evening's meeting has some characteristics that are very germane to starting school back in the next few days here. So we are going to do comments now. However, when we get to about the 30-minute mark, then we will cease with those, carry on with the rest of the meeting, so that those who are tuning in to hear back-to-school information will be able to do so. And then we also, as everyone knows, have, we have an additional section in our meeting set aside for comments. So if you don't hear your name read, do not dismay. I do have it. So the first person who I'll call is Janie Basemore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Janie Basemore. And Madam Chairman, members of the School Board, and Dr. Mitchell, first, I want to congratulate you, Dr. Mitchell, on being appointed Superintendent of the Newport News Public Schools, and I wish you much success. You and I go back all the way to Huntington Middle School days. And speaking of Huntington Middle School, I can only say, we fought a good fight. We are not happy with relocating Huntington. Most will not understand when I say sacred ground. We are not giving up because the mayor stated to us that nothing is off the table regarding the project, so we will continue to pray that after all things are considered, Huntington will remain in its current location. Speaking of prayer, please know that I pray for this School Board, for our school division, and for every employee of Newport News Public Schools for a successful and safe school year. I pray that every child is equally treated and that we are so busy providing every child a quality education that we do not have time for belittling and labeling children. I'm reminded of the saying that children do not ask to come here, so let us pledge to give them the best we have to offer. I pray that every child come to the realization that guns and other dangerous weapons are not ways to settle conflict, that they understand that unlike the gaming, when you use a firearm or other dangerous weapon, that person may never get up again. Their life and your life are over. I pray that every child pledge that they will not touch firearms or other dangerous weapons to try to settle a conflict. I pray for our parents, that they come to understand that they are the first teacher for their children. They must teach the morals and They must teach the morals and the values and not rely upon teachers to be parent and teacher. Understand that a teacher with twenty-five students in a classroom is dealing with twenty-five different personalities and attitudes at once. I pray that parents become involved in their child's school. Joining a school P T S A or P T A is a way to support and advocate for your child. I challenge every parent and each of you as school board members to join a P T A. And Huntington is okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jean McGruder.
Hi, everyone. Congratulations, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Excellent choice for now.
Thank you.
Till we disagree. Evening, school board. I'm here to talk about collective bargaining. I've spoke to y'all about it before. Most of y'all were here. But, just to get on with it, because if I read this paper, y'all are gonna throw the red light on me anyway. Anyway, this is about collective bargaining for school employees. I'm hoping that you follow the lead of our mayor, Philip Jones, because one of his first actions was not only to say that he was going to try and figure out collective bargaining for city employees, but he was also set up a meeting with all the local union labor leaders to figure out how this could actually be put into action. I have shown y'all and told y'all how you can save money on this. Richmond and Fairfax are good examples. I've told you right now the system is... As y'all are very familiar, hey, General Assembly, how much money you got? So, they put out a figure. And then the city council's gotta meet that figure. That may be above or below what the teachers really want, because the teachers just don't want wages, as y'all have told me from Speak City. They want benefits. They want working conditions. And you may not know exactly what they want unless you sit down at the table with them. So, collective bargaining agreement would do away with that system that I have been working on for forty-five years, lobbying against, which is the General Assembly and City Council, and then back to the school board. School board goes back to the City Council, hoping they can please the teachers. So, we gotta do away with that system. It doesn't really give the teachers what they want because nobody here sits down at the table with teachers. So, according to Richmond, who has liked it, right now, what is it, ten percent from General Assembly? So, the teachers may be happy wage-wise. I doubt it, but somewhat. But, they may not need ten percent if you add benefits to it. So, I'm asking for a commitment from the school board. We've been out of it a year, year and a half, two years. And just to follow the mayor's lead, hold a meeting with the local labor leaders. These are apprentices. These are like our president, Shipyard, which a lot of Shipyard parents and spouses and all, they have kids in your system. So, you wanna make them happy. But, I'm asking for that meeting to come to fruition. I will facilitate it if you need. I will help y'all, because I want y'all to know everything there is before, you know... And I need a commitment to actually... I'm done. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Amber O'Neill. Amber O'Neill.
Good evening. My name is Amber O'Neill, and I am the parent of Indigo O'Neill Turner. And he is an upcoming freshman at Warwick High School. I am requesting that my child's chosen name be placed on the official school roster. My child is transgender and goes by the pronoun he/him. The school staff at Credite Middle have been very supportive and mindful of his name and pronouns. Unfortunately, because his legal name is Angela, all documentation, awards, reports, yearbook, et cetera, has to use that name. It creates an atmosphere of confusion and hectoring among his peers and is just an uncomfortable and awful situation for him. I plead that the board would vote fairly so my child can have an easier transition into high school. Thank you.
Amanda Rochel. I'm not sure if I said that right. I'm not sure if I'm reading it well. So, if you would repeat, that's great.
Amanda Rochel.
Rochel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Amanda Rochel. I am a believer. I am a wife to one, a mother to five, and I'm also the co-director of Speak Up Newport News. In 2021, Governor Northam released transgender model policies that were voted on by the school board and ultimately approved. These policies took parents out of the equation when addressing transgender issues. I'm here tonight to ask that policy J B be adjusted to align with the revised 2023 model policies that have been issued by Governor Youngkin's Education Department. Specifically, I'm asking that the policy clearly states that the school system complies with state law recognizing a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing and education of their child in accordance with their family values and faith. Also, that the school system does not encourage or instruct teachers to conceal material information about a student from the student's parent, including information related to gender. I also would like to say that it should state and uphold the fundamental and constitutional rights to free speech and the religious liberty of parents, teachers, and students. I'm also asking that policy J B P be replaced with the entirety of the revised policies. Among other things, the current J B P policy contains language that encourages school officials to hide information from parents. Youngkin's revised policies emphasizes parental rights and puts parents back in the process. Some of the most dramatic improvements included in the newly updated model policies from Youngkin's Education Department include no more hiding information from parents. Instead of instructing educators how to deceive parents, the revised guidance now makes it clear that no policy, guidance, or other written materials issued by the school may encourage or instruct teachers to conceal relevant information about a student from the student's parent, including information about gender. Parents must be notified before gender identity counseling. It also emphasizes that parents must be informed and given an opportunity to object before counseling regarding gender is given to their children. No more compelled speech. The revised policies also address the fact that schools cannot constitutionally compel employees or students to speak words that violate their faith or conscience. To reiterate, I'm asking you to align the current transgender model policies to reflect, in its entirety, the adjusted policies that have been issued by Governor Youngkin. It is time that Newport News protects every single child equally and fairly and puts parents back in the equation. Thank you.
Pastor Russell Evenson.
Also, congratulations, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am Pastor Russell Evenson from World Outreach Worship Center at Newport News, and I represent a congregation in which forty-five percent of that congregation are parents, families, residents of Newport News. And in August of 2021, the school board here adopted the model policies on transgender students to ensure that it aligned with the state law at that time and to protect itself from the liabilities and the lawsuits that could ensue. But as of July nineteenth, Governor Northam's model policies have been withdrawn and are no longer effective according to the Virginia Department of Education's adoption of those policies, which replace the former policy with the revised model policies. By law, now it's up to all the school boards here in Virginia to make that decision. And so, we are appealing and petitioning you, the school board of Newport News, to vote to update this J B policy with wording that provides clear and long-term protection for the fundamental parental rights and religious liberties of both students and families. The current policy is rather vague and does not provide the superintendent with very clear directives in all situations. And there has been a potential to leave our schools in a state of constant change with each new superintendent that may come forth, which we hope yours is long-term, and it would provide harm to students, parents, and to teachers. We're also petitioning you, as the school board, to vote to direct Superintendent Dr. Mitchell to replace policy J B in its entirety with the 2022 revised model policies. These 2022 revised model policies have taken great strides to protect parents' and students' rights and which the current policy really lacks. Among the other things this policy, new policy, would do, it removes the language that, again, as formerly mentioned, hides information from parents, especially when their children are experiencing gender identity. I am so sorry for this student here that previously spoke as mom, that things like that happen in a school system. That's not right. That person, that child, has the right to accept and be what they want to be. We acknowledge that. We're not trying to force anything on anybody. And it's clear that parents need to be notified and given an opportunity to be involved. And when counseling referring to transgendering is taking place with their children, in the past, we kind of feel like that consideration has been a little bit one side of the narrative. So, we would like to urge you to consider the equally important perspective of both the kids and the teens and the families who've experienced harm in these previous policies. And for example, we have some... The student Smith from Loudon Stonebridge High School that was raped in a restroom, supposedly by a transgender male. Turns out, he wasn't really that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Jonathan Waldron. W A L D, I think, R O N.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Waldron. I'm a Newport News resident and a small business owner here. On the agenda tonight for you to vote on is a revision to policy G B A A, discrimination and harassment policy. I'm urging you to please vote no on the proposed revisions to the policy, which adds the wording sexual orientation and sexual identity to it. I'd like to make clear that I do not believe... That I believe that every individual and child, without exception, can and should be protected against harassment and harm. However, both state and local policies already provide comprehensive nondiscrimination and anti-harassment protections. However, we've seen, demonstrated in multiple cases, Peter Vlaming and Tanner Cross, for instance, how singling out these categories for special protections within our policies are often weaponized against religious freedoms and free speech, especially when it comes to how gender identity pronouns are handled at school. With that, I have the definition of harassment which is given in the policy that you're voting on tonight. Is any behavior that creates a hostile or offensive working environment is a form of illegal harassment? So, I find it very vague. Doesn't really give a lot of extra definition on the illegal harassment side of it. It does go into more definitions on the sexual harassment, but does not really give a lot of guidance otherwise on illegal harassment. So, in many cases, I see that this could be weaponized against people who just do not want to use someone's pronouns, even if they're very respectful about that and using their proper name and the name that they've chosen, like in the case that we saw earlier, just wanting to be called by the name that they've chosen. So, I'm just asking that you vote no on this issue. I think it needs more clarity. And it leaves the school open to just more... More issues arising that will take up more of my tax dollars. And so, I'm asking you to protect our teachers' religious freedoms and vote no on this measure to protect our teachers and our children in this school system. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Josh Hetzler.
Good evening. My name is Josh Hetzler. I'm the legal counsel for Founding Freedoms Law Center based in Richmond. I want to address the transgender model policies, as has been mentioned a few times tonight. And I want to leave you with just three brief points. And the first is that the legal analysis on this is quite simple. Virginia Code 22.1-23.3B expressly states that each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, but may be more comprehensive than the model policies concerning the treatment of transgender students developed by the Department of Education. Those policies have, in fact, been adopted and the former policies have been rescinded. And the mandate is there. The second point is that the refusal to follow the state directive could result in lawsuits against the school board and even possibly in your personal capacities. First, the school board could be sued over its policies, whether written or in practice, that violate certain constitutionally-protected or statutory-guaranteed rights, including parental rights, free speech, free exercise of religion, and others. and others. And secondly, Virginia Code 15.2-1405 specifies that members of local government boards generally have immunity from their discretionary or governmental actions that tortuously harm another, but not when it constitutes gross negligence. So, a school board's deliberate refusal to adopt legally required policies regarding transgender students would certainly add more credence to a claim of gross negligence if a student were harmed because of the board's policies. For example, allowing boys to enter girls' bathrooms at will, and if a girl is sexually assaulted by a boy in the girls' bathroom. That might be an example of gross negligence by a refusal to adopt policies that are required by law. Lastly, I want to note that I believe last time you all adopted the previous policy, you did so in part on the basis that it was required by law, and I think that was largely right. And so, with that understanding, I hope and urge you that you would do the same now under these. And I would just offer our services at the Founding Freedoms Law Center, if we can be of any service to you legally, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Gary Porter, and then we'll have time for two more after that, and then we'll move on with a little more of our agenda items.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, now including Mr. Lynn and Dr. Mitchell. My name is Gary Porter. I'm also here tonight to urge you to adopt the 2023 revised model policies to replace policy JB-P with its, in its entirety, with the new policies, and to do so without delay. I don't need to remind you that the clock is ticking on the resumption of classes. The new policies are measured and they are reasonable. They strengthen parental rights, which I think is a critically important goal. God places parents and parents alone with the responsibility of raising and educating their children. I don't think I'm telling you anything new. And some parents, of course, are able to do this on their own. Other parents are forced to employ the services of Newport News schools in assisting them with that responsibility. And when they do so, they are, of course, confident that their rights as parents will not be infringed without consultation. Thankfully, these guidelines also protect a critical right of all citizens, but particularly your teachers, and that is a protection against compelled speech when the speech conflicts with their conscience or their reasonably held religious beliefs. And finally, the new policies also provide additional protections for children using bathrooms and locker rooms. Frankly, I see nothing in the new policies that should give you pause or any reluctance in adopting them, and I thank you in advance for doing so without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Veronica Williams.
My name is Veronica Williams, and I was born and raised in Newport News, matriculated through and graduated from the Newport News Public School System, and have multiple family members who matriculated through and graduated from this school system, to include a minor who is currently in this school system. I'm also an attorney whose law office is located in the city of Newport News. I'm here because the Virginia Department of Education recently released model policies for transgender issues. By law, it is now up to each of the 134 public school divisions in Virginia to adopt local school board policies that are consistent with or more comprehensive than the 2023 model statewide policies. I request the school board vote to replace the current JB-P in its entirety with the Virginia Department of Education model policies, with a particular focus on requiring public schools to obtain parental consent prior to sending children to counseling for any issue of concern pertaining to their gender. In Virginia, licensed counselors have been stripped by state statute of their independent professional judgment when it comes to counseling children with regard to any issues or concerns about their gender. Under Virginia law, a licensed therapist is at risk of losing his or her license to perform counseling for professional misconduct if he or she counsels a child with gender dysphoria to consider embracing his or her gender of birth. However, the statute is one-sided, as it is not considered unprofessional conduct for a therapist to counsel a child to consider embracing a gender other than his or her gender of birth to include transition surgery while still a minor. Therefore, while a child is referred, when a child is referred to counseling, whether inside or outside of the school system, the child is not being referred to a licensed professional who is free to exercise independent professional judgment. To the contrary, the child is being referred to a professional who is operating under the risk and threat of losing his or her license if he or she even suggests that the child consider embracing his or her gender of birth. Many of you may not be aware of this law, many parents may not be aware of this law, and when children believe they're being referred to a neutral professional to help when they're confused about their gender, they may not be aware of this one-sided law. Nowhere else in the law do we allow minors to make important decisions without parental consent. Children cannot purchase alcohol or sign contracts. As an estate planning attorney, I can tell you that children cannot inherit or own property, and children have not traditionally been permitted to consent to medical treatment or surgery. I would ask each of you to please consider this counseling construct that impacts student outcomes as you evaluate policy decisions. What we don't want to see is any young, precious, extremely vulnerable, and extremely impressionable child who currently self-identifies as trans make a decision. Is that it?
Yes. Well, thank you very much. The last one that we'll do for this time section, I think it is Temere, T-E-M-E-R-E, and I believe this is Willis. I think the pen jumped on the end there. Thank you.
Tonight, I am speaking to you as a child of God, a minister, former student, current teacher, and resident of Newport News. I grew up here. I have experienced great care from amazing teachers, mentors, employers, leaders, coworkers, and families, but there has been a shift somewhere, as we see all around us, that there are matters in the media and on news, on the news, and throughout the world, frankly, as we see it today, but let it not be so in Newport News, because we are to be alight. We are attempting to solve spiritual matters in, on physical turf. The right doors must be closed. Leaders, you have been endowed with the authority of God. Each person in your care has been put out, excuse me, part, be put here to carry out a plan, but you're flying a plane. For, does it not say in Romans Chapter 13, verse 1, "Let every person submit to governed authorities, but there is no authority except for God, and those that exist that were put in place by God"? And according to Psalms 2, verse 10 through 12, "So now, O kings, be wise; take warning, O judges of the earth; serve the Lord with fear and rejoice in trembling." My sharing of this is not out of order, for I have met with leaders and clergy leaders and civic leaders for years to share the openness of this account as means to support them alongside their journey and their vision, their wholesale vision that the Lord has given them. However, when our humanity supersedes that of our creators, the foundations of who we are as a city and community are exposed and unprotected, and there is no clear road for people to travel on and to fulfill their purpose. Our human authority has this much impact on lands and people who dwell in them. It is time for us to repair the breaches and repair the breaches lest our unseen enemy has legal authority to come in like a flood. It is time to return to the courts of our maker so that great people, the great people that you govern, will be given a chance to lead and live. This will not be easy, and it will take everyone, but we have everything we need, and we have already been supplied with this. Newport News, do you not know who you are? We have been chosen to be light and to give direction, as our flag actually proclaims. Hide your light no more, for you have, for have you not heard to whom much is given, much is required. You have been entrusted with great people, govern what God has given you well, in the light. Use this light to protect religious freedom and adopt the tool that Governor Youngkin just recently released. Only be strong and courageous. Hide your light no more, for everything that operates in the dark will be exposed by the Lord. Arise and shine, for your light has come. Who gives it, who gives, who knows if you have been put in the seat of authority for such a time as that you have support? And this is my final word. Father, forgive us for going our own way. Heal our minds, our heart, and our soul. Forgive us for not continually inviting you into the internal and external affairs of our heart. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for their comments this evening, and as I mentioned, we will have another comment section a little closer to the end of our meeting. We want to move now on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the special meeting, June 6, 2023, 3.02 minutes from the closed session, June 6, 2023, 3.03 minutes from the closed meeting, June 20, 2023, 3.04 minutes from the work session, June 20, 2023, 3.05 minutes from the regular meeting, June 20, 2023, 3.06 minutes from the organizational meeting, July 1, 2023. We also have 3.07 financial reports, including the revenue report for July 2023, the expense report for May 2023, 3.08, the personnel report, 3.09, the VSBA media honor roll. At this time, can we have a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we can, that I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searle's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda, Section 4, some action items. On the agenda this evening is 4.01 Personnel Actions. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the recommendations of the superintendent for Karen Baysmore Person, Booker T., Washington Middle School, Ramona Brower, Principal, and Achievable Dream Middle High School, and Delrose Atkinson, Assistant Principal, Booker T., Washington Middle School.
Thank you for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
I think I need to vote, but take a vote.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searle's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So, Dr. Mitchell, would you please do the honors of introducing our new personnel?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our new, um, promoters, if you will. When I call your name, please stand. If you have someone with you from your family, please briefly introduce them if you would like. I'd like to begin with introducing Ms. Karen Baysmore Person as the new principal of Booker T. Washington Middle School. Ms. Baysmore Person has a Master of Arts degree in Special Education and another Master of Arts degree in Communication from Norfolk State University. She has been with Newport News Public Schools for 22 years. She, beside right now, prior to this, she was the assistant principal at Booker T. Washington. She's also worked as an instructional technology coach and a teacher for Newport News Public Schools. Congratulations, Ms. Baysmore Person. Have anyone with you you'd like to introduce?
I do. I actually have my sister joining. My Aunt Janie Baysmore, and last but not least, the favorite here, my husband Stacy.
Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Ramona Brower as the new principal at an Achievable Dream Middle and High School. Ms. Brower has a Master of Education degree in Administration and Supervision from Regent University. She has been with Newport News. She's another lifer for 27 years. She previously worked as an assistant principal at an Achievable Dream Middle and High, also assistant principal at Woodside High School and Heritage High School. Congratulations, Ms. Brower. Do you have someone that you'd like to introduce tonight?
I have my lovely mother.
Yay!
I have my high school boss, Brower, with you.
And completing the new appointees, I would like to introduce Ms. Delrose Atkinson as the new assistant principal at Booker T. Washington Middle. Ms. Atkinson has an Educational Leadership degree from Longwood University. She has been with Newport News Public Schools for 20 years. She was working for us as an instructional technology coach and has also worked as an ITC team lead. She has been a teacher in Isle of Wight, and she's also been a teacher in Hampton City Schools. Congratulations. Do you have anyone you would like to introduce?
My husband, Wayne Atkinson, and my sister, Marjorie Hall, and my niece, Danielle Johnson, and my nephew and nephews, and my professional learning squad, my forever colleagues, Betsy, Tiffany, Robin, Kirsten, and Alex.
Thank you, and we appreciate you all bringing your talents to Newport News Public Schools or in this case, keeping them here. So, we do appreciate that. I'm going to take just a tad of a break to let those who were just recognized, if you would like to get home and have dinner and celebrate, go out to dinner, or we'll give you a moment to depart. Dr. Mitchell, do we have an update?
We do not have anyone here tonight to present. However, if you recall, Dr. Ransom did a presentation, and there were some questions, and he has responded to each one of the board members' questions in writing and made himself available as well.
Thank you, and we do want to thank Dr. Ransom for the effort here. So, do I have a motion to adopt our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to approve the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Well, the one discussion I will make is I want to thank the superintendent who, in her interim superintendent role, created one of our committees to look at the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook with the community, and I want to thank the community too for their input. It was quite evident when reviewing this year's Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that we had the support of the community going through that document, so much so that they have agreed to stay on board and assist us moving forward. So, thank you to them, as well as Dr. Ransom, for leading that effort, and we're looking forward to implementing that document this school year. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Searle's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is 4.03, the 2023-2024 Student Fees. Dr. Mitchell?
We have Dr. Jones here available tonight. Should there be any questions regarding the student fees? Dr. Jones did do a presentation in a previous board meeting. There was one question which has been rectified or answered, but she is here, however, to answer any questions, should you have any.
Great. Board members, do you have any questions? So, do I have a motion to adopt the 2023-2024 Student Fees?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to approve the 2023-2024 Student Fees as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And do we have discussion?
Sure. I just want to, you know, make sure the board continue to find ways to reduce our children's output as far as bills. And I think the PTA can help. I think the community can, community can help with these fees. You know, it's pretty tough, because, you know, as we know, some kids just can't afford some of those fees. So, I just want to make sure we continue to look at ways to try to reduce those.
Thank you. And we, we do currently have a waiver system in place, and so I do encourage students and parents to communicate with your building administrators or with your teachers if you are in that situation. However, Mr. Harris makes an excellent point, and we certainly will continue to look at that.
Thanks.
Dr. Best, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say what Dr. Mitchell said.
Wonderful. Okay, please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Mrs. Searle's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is 4.04 Huntington Middle School Final Design Plans. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you. Mr. Fairheart is here to provide an update to the board and the community on the recommended design plan for Huntington Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Searle's Law, Vice Chairman Dr. Best, members of the board, Superintendent Mitchell. I come before you this evening seeking final approval of the design plans for Huntington Middle School, which of course is a part of the Comprehensive Southeast Community Resource Area Project. Recapturing a series of events, it was... Recapturing a series of events, it was November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, nearly twenty months to the day that the board adopted the final site plan for Huntington Middle School and the Southeast Community Resource Area Project. This provided the architect, Quinn Evans, the ability to move forward with developing the designs plan, the design plans for Huntington Middle School. As a reminder, through various stakeholder group meetings, the following design themes were identified as priorities: celebrating learning, open and secure environment, students and teachers matter, honoring the history of Huntington, and fostering community among students. And I hope that you find that the design that we're presenting to you this evening fulfills those design themes. In February of two thousand twenty-two, the board approved an MOU with the city. The MOU states that the school board must approve the final design plans for Huntington Middle School prior to the procurement of a construction contractor. So just to refresh your memories, this is the actual design plan for the, or, excuse me, the site plan for the school itself eliminates the community side of the property. This is the first floor. You can see the main entry point on Orchid Avenue, another entry point from the bus loop. That's the main student entry on my left. And then you can see Twenty-Eighth Street and Wickham here. This is the first floor. What you'll notice throughout the presentation is that the building stacks. So the second and third floors on the academic wing, which is on my right, are nearly identical, and most of the other amenities are on the first floor. The white area in the middle is a courtyard, excuse me, as you recall. Lower left is the gymnasium, and the green is the cafeteria. The administrative offices are up by the main entry. We have our auditorium and fine arts over there to the left. And then the orange color, or what I would call orange, is the CTE sites or classrooms to be utilized at the discretion of the school division. Oh, this is the second and third floor. Let me go back one. You can see also in the lower right, the architect did leave us room for expansion moving forward. As you all are aware, we're building a six-hundred-student middle school. There's a first-floor opportunity for expansion. This is the second and third floor. Again, they mirror the academic wing of the first floor, and there's an area for expansion on each of those floors as well. The, um, the design plans were presented to the school board during a work session on March fourteenth. During that discussion, there were three main questions, I believe, that were raised by the board, one being the size of the auditorium, two being the conversation about the ability to add a magnet program to the site, or reestablish a magnet program, and the third was the potential to add a track. The auditorium, working with the architect and our plant services team, we conducted a comparative analysis of the proposed auditorium at Huntington Middle School and other existing middle school auditoriums within the school division. For example, we compared Gilder Sleeve and Heinz, obviously sister schools. Their auditoriums are approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet, including a five-hundred-foot stage. The proposed auditorium at Huntington Middle School is fifty-seven hundred square feet with a six-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot stage. Again, about eleven hundred students at Heinz and Gilder Sleeve, six hundred at Huntington. So we feel that the auditorium is adequate to meet the needs and the capacity of the school. In regards to a magnet program, or reestablishing a magnet program, we have identified some instructional space, currently as I identified for you, labeled as CTE space, but it can be utilized to support the reestablishment of a magnet program if desired. Certainly, design and implementation are different. The building's designed to be used instructionally, and we make the determination about how that will be used. And then lastly, we asked the architect to consider including a track. That's before you on the slide, on the screen. The track, as it's proposed, is a three-hundred-and-thirty-meter rectangular track with a multi, around the multipurpose athletic field, and it's a revision to the design plans that were originally presented to you. You can see that it's gonna surround the artificial surface. It's still gonna allow us to include the sporting lights, the perimeter fencing, which surrounds the exterior of the property. The track will be two lanes. Well, it will still allow for the track. There's a walking track also that's included on the community side of the property, which will still exist even with the rectangular track around the multipurpose athletic field, which we thought was a plus for the community. Additionally, it allows us to keep the fieldhouse, which has storage and restrooms, which we thought was important with the expansion of middle school sports, and also for recreational activities for the community. Doesn't, uh, doesn't marginalize our parking at all. We still have parking for a hundred-and-fifty cars, all dedicated to the middle school. One downside is that there'll be no permanent spectator seating, and we'll have portable bleachers for our families during athletic events and the ability to use them on the weekends for parks and rec, whoever else may use our fields when schools are not. Allows us to maintain the campus trees and sidewalks in the original plan. The biggest unknowns are the impacts on stormwater, infrastructure system, as the impervious areas, so we're gonna need some grading and drainage. It's gonna potentially eliminate the amphitheater stage if underground retention grows significantly, and that's to be determined by the architect based on the design. If approved tonight, the revised, tentative revised timeline is as follows: completion of the plans by November of two thousand twenty-three, finalizing the bid package around December of twenty-three, bid solicitation in January of twenty-four, bid review in February of twenty-four, bid award in March of twenty-four, groundbreaking hopefully in April of twenty-four, and project completion, second semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And on our call last week, the architect did indicate that the revision to the design plans would push the project back approximately four months. So with that, it's recommended that the school board adopt the final design plans for Huntington Middle School as presented during the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three work session with the addition of the rectangular track around the multipurpose athletic field as proposed by the architect.
Thank you, Mr. Fairheart. Questions from the board at this time?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Okay, I'd like to go back to your slide nine about the track. So two questions there about the track. I see four hundred meters and three-hundred-and-thirty meters. My concern, of course, is, you know, four hundred meters is regulation size for a track. Which track is four hundred meters and which one is three-hundred-and-thirty meters?
Three-hundred-and-thirty meters would be the track around the athletic field. Four hundred meter would be the walking track on the community portion of the property.
Where is the walking track?
If you can see the rectangle to the left, to my left. Is there a light on here? It's, it's the rectangular that runs this way.
Oh, that, that rectangle there, okay.
It's lighted, it's a lighted walking path for the community. It's two lanes, it's gonna be rubber out surface.
So this, this track then would be a two-lane, non-regulation track?
Correct. And the three-hundred-and-thirty would be four-lane.
What surface, what surface is the track?
The walking track is rubber.
Or, I mean, the, the track field for the, for the kids to use is?
We requested that be the rubber out surface.
That'd be a rubber out surface, okay. And then the football field, that's, that's, you know, encased within it, the width and the distance of the, of the field?
Regulation.
That, that is a hundred, a hundred yards, fifty-five yards wide football field? Okay. Okay, so, um, and I guess the question is, what did the architect say about providing a four-hundred-meter track, even if it's, you know, two lanes? How much did that, how much does that cost? Did they, did they offer up? And I suppose, in tandem with that, talking with our athletic director, what can we do with a two-lane, non-regulation track?
Well, I can answer that off the top of my head, if you will. I would say they can use it for health and PE on a regular basis. Currently, all of our middle schools participate in track and field, and none of them have a regulation four-hundred-meter track, so they're making do with, without. So this would, in all, in all ways to say, probably be better than what most of our middle schools currently have. What was proposed for the, by the architect for a four-lane track, a full-size four-hundred-meter track, it says, um, one, it would only be four-lane, so it wouldn't be a competition. That's typically eight-lane. So we couldn't have competitions there. It would eliminate the two-lane track surface in the community space and the amphitheater. Again, no spectator seating. It would eliminate the fieldhouse and the restrooms. It would eliminate two basketball courts, reduces our parking from a hundred-and-fifty to about ninety-eight or a hundred. So we're gonna lose about fifty parking places. And again, the major unknowns in regards to stormwater runoff and infrastructure, and it also eliminates some of the campus trees and sidewalks.
Okay. So we lose, by having a regulation track, we would lose basketball courts outside. We, we do have basketball courts inside of the school site.
You're right, the two, the three basketball courts are here.
Basketball courts on the outside.
Within the walking.
Okay, would be lost.
Which would be lost as well.
And then they said fifty parking spaces.
Fifty parking places.
As well, okay. And then my last, my last question is the question I've asked you every, every time we've had this discussion, which is, how much money does it cost to have Huntington remain where it is? So the same design, but flipped with Huntington Middle School over there on the left where it is right now and the community center over on the right.
So certainly, Mr. Brown, I'm not in a position to answer that question. I can share with you what we shared with us on the call. It would, it would be a minimum of at least two-point-five million dollars to start the design process all over again, because it's not just the design for the school, it's a design for the community center, the pool, the amenities as well. And there's also the concern that the architect raised about wanting to preserve the original Huntington High School, a portion of the building, and his solution was to relocate on the other side of the property and didn't identify a feasible opportunity to maintain that with the site, with the school on the current site.
And I guess, did the architect express, knowing that Mr. Brown has been asking the same question for two years, and I ask this question every time we talk about this, that how much would it cost for Huntington to be where it is? That they still, after two years, haven't been able to come up with a ROM on how much money does it cost to keep Huntington where it is? That they, they didn't say that they have, in two years, they couldn't find the time?
Only the design fee is what they discussed.
Okay, so they only said, hey, just give us more money to do a design fee, and then we'll think about it.
Correct. And then it goes out the bid, of course.
Okay.
Where the, where the true cost is identified.
Right, okay.
Mr. Fairheart, I also recall hearing, too, that if we went back to drawing, that would be an additional eight to ten months. Is that correct?
At a minimum.
At a minimum, okay.
I want to add that piece, too. We, I don't want this to wait. We need to move as quickly as possible. And, and if we may continue to make changes, it's gonna push that timeline back. Our community is depending on the fact that we dispel, uh, our children need a place to go after school and be able to, you know, engage in activities. So to delay it would, would not be something that I would recommend. So I say we stick to the tracks, and that's why I, I would, um, and, and that if we decide to change the plans and change it eight to ten months out, it's doing what we've been doing all along. And, and I don't think, I don't think that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Mr. Harris?
Well, mine is pretty simple. Even though we, this is a community plan, I think the priority still should be set on the schools. So on February the twenty-fourth, when the bid review is put into place, we should have a priority list of what we call bid options. So when the bid comes in, and obviously, more than likely, it's gonna be overbid, we, as a school division, should have what we call bid options, which means that anything outside of privilege of teaching kids should be the first thing to go. And that's something I've discussed with the chairman and the board, but, you know, you know, it's standard protocol.
Absolutely.
Right. So we need to make sure we have that, or at least you all know what we, what we want, all right?
Certainly.
So in theory, in theory, in theory, any firm can say, hey, yeah, if you move that, it's gonna cost this, it's gonna cost that, right? We really don't know the cost until the bid comes in, in theory.
Agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Dr. Best?
So with the option that we're looking at for the, um, track with the lanes around the athletic field, what the, um, firm did say is that they talked about a delay, that it would be a delay because they have to go back to the table to redo the design, but they did acknowledge that also currently the demolition is, is behind. So the, it, it, it's not like if we say we want to go with the option for the track, that that will be the only holdup for the project. Things could be moving to design the, um, track around the athletic field and the plans for the, um, as, and as the demolition continue, they will be going concurrently. So that won't be a reason to hold it up significantly, more longer, significantly longer.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, can I just, it's just a point of education, right? When, when any firms go into design, they are designed under a contract, which means the city say, hey, guess what? We're paying you to start design here and, and finish here, thirty-five, sixty-five, ninety-five percent. Once you get to ninety-five percent, right, there's money exchanging hands. If not, then regardless of what they have to demo, regardless of what they have to tear up, the design has to be done before you start even talking about construction. And so, so one phase has to be done, and if we delay it, then it obviously delays a lot of those things. So, yeah.
Further, further discussion, yes.
Madam Chair, just one point to also share is that in our middle schools, while we have, uh, track, all competitions are over at Todd Stadium.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the, the track competitions will not take place right there at Hunn, at Huntington. They will take place, continue to take place at Todd Stadium.
Absolutely.
Did you have another?
Not a question, just a comment.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So my other comment is that the school closed in two thousand eighteen, and just make a comment. And so the students have been displaced since that time. And, and that should be our priority. And for every year that we delay building the school, it's the students that are suffering the most. And so we just have to keep them in the forefront of our mind. And so right now, we will have two grades still at Heritage, Huntington at Heritage. But as we keep moving the project out, there may come a time where we don't have any students at Huntington because the rising sixth graders are going to another school. So it's just imperative, the kids, since two thousand and eighteen, they have not had a building in the community, they have not had a school, and so it's, we have to keep this project moving.
Yes. I think the comment that I will make even before the vote is I really want to thank members on this board, the members of council, and Mr. Fairheart and his counterparts for the city, Dr. Mitchell, and our city manager to get together and make this a priority for today. As we are preparing to go back to school, we realize we're down a school, and that's a hard thing to stomach year after year for our students. So I'm very glad that we are at this point and able to take a vote. Let's see how we do. So, any other, any other questions before we make a motion? Okay. Is there a motion for Huntington Middle School Final Design Plans?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the final design plan for Huntington Middle School.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
So, Madam Chair, I'll just make a, I'll make a comment now that we're in the, um, the action item stage here. One of the things that makes this simple or straightforward for me, it's always consequential when you make, when you make promises, but I did make, I did make a promise that I was going to hold the line on finding a number for how much it costs to keep Huntington Middle School where it is currently today. And I think that it's, well, you know, the rest of the board is gonna do what, what their individual will compel them to do, but I gave my word to that, and I'm gonna stand by that, that would not support the design without knowing what that number was. To simply be told for years in a row, it's too expensive, it's a lot of money, but we're in a position, as leaders and as elected officials, to actually be accountable to citizens to say, well, how much was it to, to keep the school where it was? And in five years, have not been able to get a straightforward answer to what I consider to be a simple question. That, that I, you know, that, uh, I believe should be unacceptable to the entire board. And what we want to be careful of is that, uh, we're in the same pattern, and by the same pattern, I mean getting yourself walked into the slaughter. In two thousand and eighteen, we were definitely in a hurry, but there was no hurry on the counterpart of our, our friends in council, and they said, you hurry up and wait. And we went through a lot of challenges and changes to try to keep Huntington Middle School a lot. and they said, you hurry up and wait, and we went through a lot of um challenges and changes to try to keep Huntington Middle School alive as a school of record, um, which that was important work for us to do, and we, we did do that. Um, but at the same time, um, there was no urgency on the other side, and it was, no, you're going to get this design, and you're going to get the design the way that we designed it. And now, we're still getting the design the way they designed it, they haven't considered any other alternatives in years. And I'm not, and not blaming the current council because we have a new council now, but what I'm saying is that, that, that um consideration by the community, that was a request made by citizens to me, that has never been considered in the design of Huntington Middle School. Having Huntington Middle School, keeping it where it is, that has not been considered, which is why we don't have a ROM today, which is why I'm asking the question, how much? Can you give, just rough word of magnitude, how much, how much is it? So, and that's, and so all I'm saying in, in that regard is um, I don't like uh to be pushed into a, a hole where, into a direction where this is the design, we just have to live with it, and we're going to, and we're going to have to just work around whatever changes there are to something that someone else decided that wasn't us with, when the board, we were supposed to decide where our school goes in the first place, and we didn't actually decide that. You know, I'm not trying to go all the way back in history and, and rehash all of that, but this is not our design. Um, and this, this, we're at a stage now where this is supposed to become our design, and still to me, without the questions answered, it's not my design, so, and that's why I don't, you know, support tonight, I'll let the rest of my colleagues make their own comments.
You want to go first?
Um, I have a comment as well. I made a, I made a promise as well, I was elected with one of my promises to do everything within my power to rebuild Huntington Middle School as soon as possible, and that is exactly what I have done. Mr. Brown, with all due respect, you have not been asking for that price, the cost since two thousand eighteen. As a matter of fact, the very board actually voted to approve the design where that school would go in the current location, and you voted yes, as well as the only dissenting vote. At some point in this process, we have to get to a place where we have to make some movement. We can keep stalling, we can keep pushing it back, but the time to really uh come and make a decision as to exactly where to place that school to preserve the history of the building, that train has already left the tracks, that train has left the tracks. So you can, you can not vote or do whatever you feel the need to do, but again, it's the students that will, if, if the project continues to get delayed, it will be the students that will be the ones that are paying the cost for what grown folks have done, whether it be the school board, whether it be the city council, it's the children that will not have a building.
Uh, Dr. Best?
Madam Chair.
Uh, I thought we were voting on the design tonight.
Yep.
So I just, you know, in terms of this, going back through history, when did we vote on the design?
You got to get identified.
We didn't, we voted on where the, the, the location of the school, because we're talking about the design because of the location of the school.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, uh, Mr. Harris?
Well, just, go, go ahead, you're in the south, you're in the south district.
Um, and I believe the reason we're here is because we added that track, that piece. But I think uh, I'm going back to, the, the students cannot continue to be displaced, the cost is going to be much greater. And that to me is what matters at this point. The decision we're making today is for the children, and uh, and that to me has to come first. Uh, and that's why I'm voting in order for us to have uh this done as soon as possible. I've talked to leaders in the community and they are not wanting to wait. And so it's important for us to um continue down the road and, and get this done.
And I did take the responsibility and the charge, um, Mr. Brown, that you did give me to go and find that number as to what it would cost to move where we um are looking at today to put the school. The issue with the facade being gone, um, I don't know how you put a dollar, dollar amount on that. Um, the other piece is uh you ta- so if we move the, keep the school where it is, the facade would go away. I don't know what the dollar amount is on that. The two point five million that has already gone into the planning, that's the number, and it, and it seems little. But there's also the eight to ten months, and that's not a dollar amount. That, that's an impact to our students, and our students being displaced for so long. You can't put a dollar amount on that either. So if we're really looking at just money, it probably is about two point five million dollars and waiting ten months to get a plan that we have to put up for bid to break ground.
Thank you for identifying me, appreciate it. Uh, I just want to, for a point of order and clarification, you know, when we make discussions up here, we got to make sure we, that discussion goes to the chair. Um, just one, just one of those things. And also, you know, for my board members that, you know, I mentioned this years ago, that we have a duty and responsibility, and it's completely laid it out in the code that we had opportunity to take our path uh and go down a private partnership, right? Uh, based on the relationship that we had with the uh past administration, and we chose not to do that. Uh, 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 and we had another route, which was an atomic route, we didn't want to use that one, but we had a chance to do that, and, and the board didn't want to take that route. So you got to understand that whoever pays the bill makes the decision. We, we, we basically gave that authority to the city, and the city said, okay, not a problem. Uh, so, but we did, we do have an option. Uh, the next time we want to build a school, we have, the, the school board has an option to go do it ourselves, even though they would have to sign off on it, but we will still be in charge, so I just want to make sure that we clarify that out, okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I will go back, do, I believe we have a motion and we had a second, and we've had discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is four point zero five revised policies. Uh, Dr. Mitchell, I know we had a presentation on these policies. Um, the board has gone to great length revising them and making sure they will meet our needs. I'm going to take them not as a block, so we have um six motions that we'll be taking this evening. The first of which is BG, the school board policy process, do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policy, to approve policy BG, school board policy process.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, conversation? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries six one.
The next is GAD, access to employee social media accounts. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policies, to approve policy GAD, access to employee social media accounts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Against.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries five two.
Next is GBAA, discrimination and harassment, do I have a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policies, to approve policy GBAA, discrimination and harassment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Again.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Against.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries four three.
The next policy is GBEBA, staff dress code. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policies, to approve policy GBEBA, staff dress code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next we have GEBC, gifts to staff, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policies, to approve, to approve policy GEBC, gifts to staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Final policy this evening is GCR, outside employ- employment, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the revised policies, to approve policy GCR, outside employment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amen.
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Against.
Harris?
Four.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to section five, reports and information. Five point zero one, back to school ready report, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, several members of our team will present our back to school report. This report will be, be um presented by multiple individuals based on their area of expertise, and we are going to begin this evening with Nina Farish, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Madam Chair Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, Dr. Mitchell, and members of the board. I am presenting our back to school staffing status on teachers and bus drivers. Some of our staffing efforts include social and digital media advertising, mail flyers, contacting recent retirees that desire to return, job fairs, walk-in interviews, and the use of university instructors, just to name a few efforts. For bus drivers, we offered a two thousand dollar sign-on bonus, the starting pay is twenty dollars and sixteen cents an hour. We are also off, we also offered a five thousand dollar employee referral bonus for hired teachers. As of today, we have received one hundred and nineteen employee referrals. The cutoff date for this program is August thirty-first. Additionally, we have instituted the role of associate teachers. This is a one-year role which allows candidates that want to be teachers and need to complete a few components, such as taking a praxis or taking a required course to become eligible for their provisional license. We have hired sixty-nine associate teachers. This serves as another path on, to grow our own, along with ITEACH, which is an alternate, alternative pathway to licensure that is more affordable than going through a college program, and it is flexible in that it is self-paced and online. ITEACH provides free praxis test preparation, therefore those who already have their provisional license can successfully complete ITEACH and obtain their full license within a year. Here we have numbers showing a three-year review of staffing for teachers and bus drivers. Currently, we have seventy-four bus driver vacancies, and we have hired nineteen, giving us a seventy-seven percent fill rate of our allocations. For teachers, in two thousand twenty-one, we started the school year with more vacancies than we had prior ye- in prior years. We were not able to fill all of those vacancies, and therefore, as we went into two thousand twenty-two, we still had those vacancies along with additional vacancies due to turnover. Thus, we had an unprecedented number of vacancies to fill in the middle of a national teacher shortage. Before the pandemic, our percent of vacancy staffed from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty was ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent. As you can see from the slide, in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, that percent decreased due to the previous history I just shared. I am happy to say for two thousand twenty-three, we have sixty-four teacher vacancies and a ninety-six point one percent of our total vacancies staffed. The human resources. Thank you. Human resources and school leadership has worked strategically with staffing to take a huge step this year towards getting us back to normalcy. For the current teacher vacancy, vacancies, we are utilizing other sources to staff these vacancies with university instructors partnered with long-term substitutes. We also have over a thousand active substitutes in our pool. And lastly, we are also hiring additional instructional assistants for support. At this time, that concludes the human resources update. Next, you will hear from Mr. Mark Stewart, Executive Director, Crisis Planning, Prevention, and Response.
Good evening, Madam Chair Searl's Law. Madam Vice Chair Best, Dr. Mitchell, glad to be here in front of y'all today, give you a brief update on our um, our layered plan that we have in place for the security and safety of our children. As you know, our safety plan is layered and involves many different pieces of the puzzle. Whoops, too hard on that, sorry. Um, and uh, these are some of the changes that we're making at the beginning of this school year. Starting, we're hiring three new security supervisors for our officers in the schools. These three security officers will be deployed regionally throughout the city, and they'll have the responsibility for keeping um our officers accountable for what they're doing, offering them guidance and leadership. Um, it'll be mirrored with our police departments north, south, and central precincts, and that will allow these three supervisors to move quickly to from school to school um on a daily basis. Um, we've hired forty-five new security officers, that gives us a hundred and fifteen total. That puts two in every elementary school, three in every middle school, and six in every high school. Um, but to supplement that plan, we've hired ten substitute officers. These substitute officers will go to various schools throughout the district to um, if an officer calls in sick, that school won't have to go short for a day, we can call a substitute officer, so the, the complement of security staff will be there. If there are particular problems in one school or another, we can surge more officers to a school um until things calm down. So we're very excited about the addition of those new substitutes. Um, we have rewritten our strategic, our standard operating guidelines for our officers, and um we are going to train them, starting on the twenty-second of this month, to be more proactive, um, to look for problems, not react to problems, to solve problems um before bad things happen. And that's going to be a focus of our training coming up this year. Um, we have also taken the time over the last six weeks to update our, our division-wide crisis management plan. Um, and that plan will eventually filter down to better crisis management plans for each individual school. Um, and we're excited, that's going through the review process, and we hope the board will see that shortly. Um, we have um had crisis management teams in every single school, and the training for those teams has been there, but it's been minimal. So we're in the process of developing a crisis management training program for each school. We're working on developing that program now, and we hope to deploy that program in November of this year, so each school's crisis management team can get individualized training for their school. Um, as you know, we, we are issuing clear backpacks to every single student in this, in the school, and we now can say we have weapons, detective systems in every one of our schools throughout the city. So each one of these is a layer of security, each one of them would not stand on their own, but as we layer them all together in our system, it contributes greatly to the safety of our students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, looks like I might have one question for you.
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes, um, you mentioned uh in terms of being proactive, and so uh research states that threat assessments are really critical in terms of um making sure that there's safety. Um, so where is, where are the threat assessments being here? Are the folks that you're working with um getting trained, or is that given to another group to the crisis management team? How, how are we handling threat assessments?
So currently, the Department of Criminal Justice. So currently, the Department of Criminal Justice Services requires a a SEP Ted assignment. It's a it's a survey of the school for for gaps within their safety plan. That's required to the Department of Criminal Justice Services, which we've completed for every school. Every school is required to complete their own crisis management plan, which they have done. And in addition to that, we are developing the training for these crisis management teams to give them a higher level of training and a better ability to respond and prevent incidences within their schools.
Okay. If you could do me a favor and do a, yeah, and and if we can, in terms of the threat assessments, because I imagine whenever a student makes a threat, somebody jumps on it in terms of making, they pull the student and question and survey the student. So it just, if we can make sure that's incorporated as part of the crisis.
You'll see within our policy, that exact thing is listed in there. It's listed per incident on what the school officials should do and how they should act and when they should call the police, not call the police. That's all in this crisis man, this overarching citywide, division-wide crisis management plan that we have just completed writing. It's currently being reviewed internally and we hope to make that available to the board shortly.
Thank you so much for your time.
Sure. And I need to introduce our Executive Director of Plant Services, Mr. Wade Beverly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell, congratulations. It's the first time I've seen you since your. So. What happened? So Plant Services has been doing some great things around the division. We have flow water machines at every school. Wanted to share that right off the bat to kind of break detention. Nothing but, we bought 121 units and I have not had one negative word about them. Everybody loves them, says the water's great. The kids say, I want more and it's it's a good thing. Kids walk around with water bottles now, just wanting to drink water. So that's the good news of the day. Plant Services, as you know, we've had some busy years these past couple of years. Not quite as many projects going on this year, but a lot bigger projects. We did 94 total. Wanted to share something else with you. Plant Services annual work orders. Last year, we did, or well, this past year, we did 22,965. Year before that, we did 19,223, which is a different increase of 3,742. What does this do? This kind of identifies the need for more funding. It identifies the need for more staff. Our buildings are getting older and this shows it's costing more and it's taking more to maintain them. So with that being said, I'll look at some of the projects around. I'm not going to read every line to you, but HVAC projects and replacements, a lot of these are ESSR projects, some which will not be completed until September of '24, but we are completing some this year. We're wrapping up several. A lot of sidewalk repairs and trip hazards we're fixing. Gym finishing and replacements, interior door replacements, casework replacements. Paving projects, as all of you know, in the paving right out here at the admin building and we did the driver's range. Saving money by installing on-demand tankless water heaters at several of our sites. Canopy replace replacements, which is badly needed at a lot of sites, so we started working on that. Environmental projects at Palmer and Ella Fitzgerald and several others. Elevator upgrades, which were badly needed at work in Crittenham. So wanted to share some, the part, everybody likes the pictures. Stony Run Gym renovation. So if you look at the left, that's what it used to look like. If you look at the right, that's what it looks like now, much brighter. You know, much nicer to go into. So hope the kids enjoy it. Ella Fitzgerald, their new gym went from old tile floor to a wood perfor, a wood performance flooring look with new bleachers and they've got their initials in the bleachers. Some projects around the division, you've seen the new bleachers at Woodside High School, see the new finished floor at Woodside. Some damage up in the soft, Ephes area at Heritage High School. The new paved driving range back behind us. Some pumps on the bottom left at Mary Passage, which is badly needed. A new compressor unit and crane lifting up at McIntosh Elementary. The fourth picture over, going towards the right at the bottom, that's a new soi-step floor that we're putting in and that's at Kiln Creek to mitigate some water intrusion areas that we had. And then Dutro, that's a picture just showing the carpet replacement in the open form area of Learning Center. South Morrison Phase One renovations are complete with the exception of they're still getting a little bit of technology in. So all the pictures on the top are what it looks like now. Anybody that wants to go by, just get a hold of Mr. Fairheart or myself, be glad to walk you through. And all the pictures on the bottom are what it used to look like. So the picture at the bottom left is kind of looking into the picture at the top left. You it looks all different because all the rooms have been split now. So we made them smaller. They don't need the large classrooms. So anyway. And so now I would like to, if there's no questions, I'd like to introduce Karen Lynch, our supervisor, extended learning.
One moment, please. Set me up, man. Good evening. This summer, Newport News Public Schools provided pre-K through 12th graders opportunities for instruction, remediation, and enrichment at nine schools throughout our district. The STEAM program provided 500 students in grades three through 12 an enriched opportunity to engage in 10 unique STEAM camps. At Summer Institute for the Arts, or SIA, our our high schooler students were immersed in dance, drama, music, and visual arts. And our SPART program offered over 4,700 students an opportunity to receive additional instruction and remediation in reading, math, and science enrichment. These summer programs also provided learning and leadership experience for our students and staff. Approximately 20 juniors and seniors in Newport News Public Schools had an opportunity to serve as career pathway interns. 36 employees in the ODU Administrative Cohort Group served as site administrator interns and 18 employees who are current assistant principals, administrative assistants, and teachers served as site administrators. This year, our STEAM campers engaged with the following community partners. Jefferson Lab, William &amp; Mary College, Newport News Police Department, Brooks Cross and Innovation Lab, Newport News TV Channel 47, Civil Air Patrol, NASA Astro Camp, Newport News Sarfan Food Forest, WHRO Baton Environmental Van, Newport News Green Found Station, and the Virginia Air and Space Science Center. These amazing community partners incorporated emerging technologies in the computer science lessons, exposing our students to drones, unruly splats, and Lego Spike Prime robots. Students who attended SIA combined their talents to create a culminating performance featuring music, dance, and drama, while the inspiring artists created an expo to showcase their incredible talents. This summer, our five-week-long SPART program provided engaging learning experiences to close learning gaps for students at eight sites throughout our district. Meals and transportation were provided for all participants. And next, we have with school leadership, Dr. Blow.
Good evening, Madam Chair Searl's Law, Vice Chair Best, School Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Mitchell. I am here representing school leadership this evening to share some helpful information from our department for our families and students as we eagerly eagerly prepare for the opening of school. Starting Monday, August 21st, both families and students will be able to access their students' schedules conveniently through Parent View and Student View. Additionally, for those students attending the orientations, physical copies of the schedules will be distributed. If students or families have questions or need assistance regarding schedules, they may reach out to the school counseling offices for support. Device distribution for all students will kick off during the week of August 28th. This initiative is a vital part of our commitment to ensuring top-quality education and equal access to learning resources for all of our students. Our students at the Virtual Learning Academy have a slightly tailored schedule to accommodate the needs of the Virtual Learning Academy. Students at VLA will receive their devices beginning August 21st and on August 22nd. This ensures that students will have their devices well in advance of the start of school, allowing a seamless transition to virtual learning. On this slide, you will see some essential dates to note. Open houses and student orientations will take place in the next week. Preschool and elementary open houses are scheduled for August 24th. Middle school open houses are scheduled to take place on August 23rd. Point option VLA orientation open house is set for August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd based on grade level. Sixth grade student orientations for our new middle schoolers are scheduled for August 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Freshman orientations for our rising ninth grade students will take place August 25th from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So our ninth graders will be ready to kick off the high school year. Bus transportation services will be provided for both our sixth and ninth grade orientations. Please check our division website on August 19th for bus schedules. Also, please note that the regular school year bus stop information will be available online starting August 22nd. As everyone is prepping and for an exciting return to school, we want to make sure you have all the information that is needed. For that, there is a one-stop location for, to find all of this information and more on our division's back-to-school webpage. On the division's website, you can find everything you need to know about registration procedures, supplies for your child, that your child might need to start the school year, breakfast and lunch menus, and school calendars to stay up to date with important dates throughout the school year. All this and more can be easily accessed on our division website under the back-to-school banner. I am now pleased to introduce Dr. Joanne Jones, Executive Director of Curriculum and Development, who will share some exciting information regarding teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, Board members, and Dr. Mitchell. I am pleased to round out teaching and learning this evening with our back-to-school updates. During the 2022-23 school year, Newport News Public Schools participated in a curriculum audit to include a review of the written, taught, and assessed curriculum. Additionally, focus groups were held to gain perspectives of teachers, administrators, and supervisors. Based on the recommendations, the Office of Teaching and Learning has worked collaboratively to enhance the curriculum. One major change included the accessibility and navigation of the curriculum. As a result, all departments have migrated the curriculum to the new and revised SharePoint site. Additionally, an instructional toolkit was added to provide guidance and resources for planning and instruction. Also, the teacher feedback portal was relocated to the new site for ease of use for teachers in providing feedback regarding lessons, units, and resources. Alignment to the written, taught, and assessed curriculum is a focus for our division. One of the new changes included the development of a curriculum reviewer and writer manual. These guidelines include the steps involved in the alignment of lessons, units, assessments, and resources in grades pre-K through 12. Most importantly, teachers are encouraged to apply to be writers and participate as curriculum reviewers and writers alongside the curriculum and development teams. While there is a host of professional learning opportunities offered to teachers and administrators by our internal staff as well as external partners, we have a K-12 vertical professional learning plan to address the area of science. Last week, Newport News hosted a Region Two District Science Leaders Professional Development to collaborate on the development of a bank of regional assessment items that address the new cluster style style questions. This session was facilitated by Ann Peterson, VDOE Science Coordinator. And as a result of this training, this group will continue to meet quarterly to continue this collaboration. In addition to this training, all K-12 administrators will participate in one of the VDOE webinars to learn about the new science observation tool in order to support observations and feedback in science in schools. After spending time utilizing the tool during the first nine weeks, Newport News Public Schools administrators will come together again to extend their learning about science instruction, observation, and feedback by participating in another in-person session led by the VDOE. The Literacy Steering Committee is excited to embark year three of our pre-K literacy, pre-K through 12 literacy plan, which is included in Goal One in the Newport News Public School Strategic Plan Journey 2025. Each school is represented with at least one member on the Division Literacy Committee as well as departments and community members. This year, we will continue to activate, elevate, and extend the literacy plan's five action steps with a focus on early literacy, explicit instruction, and embedding literacy practices across all content areas and grades. This year, Newport News Public Schools will expand gifted services to all middle schools. This enables students to attend their zone schools to encourage participation in school and community events. The Dual Immersion Program is expanding to first grade in the North District at Katherine Johnson Elementary School as a part of the Department of Defense grant. The program will continue to expand each year. In addition, the first dual immersion cohort that began at Saunders Elementary School will be entering ninth grade this year at Mintzville High School. We are excited about these expansions and they also attribute and exemplify characteristics to promote college career and citizen readiness.
That deserves a hand clap. I'm sorry. That's amazing.
This year, students in grades five, eight, and 11 will be administered a new integrated reading and writing Standards of Learning Assessment. The assessment requires students to read a nonfiction text in science or social studies, answer questions connected to the passage, and respond to the prompt through writing, integrating the text they read, and applying the text in their personal life and experiences. Overall, this assessment format promotes a balanced literacy approach to writing. We are so excited to welcome all our new and returning teachers this week and next week for professional development as we prepare for all of our students on the first day of school on Monday, August 28th. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I want to say thank you for for pushing the writing because that to me is very important. It's something that has fallen behind for a while and to put that back on the table, that means if we put a focus on it, then the kids are just going to be better writers. And so, you know, that was really thoughtful. And the other thing too is just making sure that we have results along the way as we measure, you know, as we're trying that science. You know, having those assessments in place so that we can see results. Thank you.
I do have one question from Ms. Amon. I don't know if we'll be able to get her. She wanted to know how the backpacks are going to be distributed to students. So I don't know the logistics individual who can come back to the podium to share.
Mr. Wright's coming.
Here he comes. You thought you were going to get away from us tonight, Mr. Wright?
Never, never. Always available. Now, we're touching base as a team. Number one, we're going to work with.
Number one, we're going to work with procurement and Mrs. Minto on delivery. So the key is to ensure that we have an accurate delivery date, and then we want to communicate, you know, with our community around what that is in our schools.
Okay. So something will go out to the parents.
Absolutely. And we've already spoken with Ms. Price about that communication plan. We want to make sure we have the delivery. We want to under-promise and over-deliver. So we'll get that out as soon as we can.
All right. Thank you. Any other board members with questions for this presentation?
Another, I'm sorry, textbook adoption, did we, I never heard back in terms of like what was decided.
I'm sorry, Dr. Jones.
As far as, I apologize.
Due to the new literacy act, we have moved that until they have approved all of the textbooks. They've approved the one that we selected for grades K through three, but now we're waiting for the approval for grades four through five and up.
Okay. So we're still waiting to order?
Yes, yes. We don't want to order the books and then for some reason it not appear on the four, five list for elementary English.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. 5.02 is our construction report. Board members, you've received a copy of this report. Are there any questions at this time? And hearing none, we'll move on to 5.03, comments by the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to begin my comments by thanking our speakers for coming out tonight, and I wanted to share that we are in the process of reviewing the 2023 Model Policies on Ensuring Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia Public Schools. As our leadership team has shared, we are working to ensure that our students and staff are ready for the new year. So on Thursday, our returning teachers and teacher assistants will report to prepare for our students' return. Last Monday, August 17th, some members of the school board, the mayor, and school administrators joined me in welcoming nearly 250 new and experienced educators to the Newport News family during the New Teacher Welcome Celebration at Woodside High School. It was a great event, and we enjoyed meeting our newest educators. Across the school division, schools are hosting welcome events, orientations, and team-building activities to provide a festive return for staff. We do want to congratulate our summer graduates of the class of 2023. On August 1st, over 40 students received their high school diploma during our summer graduation ceremony at Heritage High School. These students put in a lot of hard work over the summer to complete their graduation requirements. And on July 20th, the board members and our police chief joined us for our annual GED graduation at the Fountain Plaza in city center. Twenty young people completed their studies and subtests in our Student Alternative Education Plan Program and successfully passed the GED test. All of our summer graduates are truly models of resilience and commitment. We truly enjoyed celebrating with them, and we wish them much success. On August 3rd, you can see we've been busy, we hosted our fifth annual Innovate Conference. Hundreds of educators participated in this year's conference. There were interactive and informative sessions, both in person and virtually, and an innovation station featuring hands-on technology and digital design tools. We did have a guest speaker who was an award-winning educator, Nancy Blair Black. She was encouraging and inspired many. So special thanks to our teaching and learning and technology departments for another successful conference. Earlier, Michelle Nordin gave the invocation and the pledge, and if you recall, she leads our PTAs for the division. So please help her and help our PTAs by coming out to Yates Elementary School for the PTA plus community event. This will be held on August 19th outside on Yates Elementary's grass field from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We recognize you cannot stay the entire time, but please come by and support. Parking is available at Yates Elementary School and the adjacent grass field. Please come out. For parents, you can join the PTA and receive free bounce house tickets for your children, and there will be food trucks there as well. So a final note, just a reminder that the new school year does begin on Monday, August 28th. I am truly looking forward to a successful school opening, and I wish each of you a productive and rewarding school year. And teachers, I will see you. I will be visiting schools and be there to support you. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Well, we will move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. There, I do have cards, so I will resume my name calling in a gentle way here. Larry Elliott, Larry Elliott. And the next one after that, I think it's Natasha Elliott. So we'll just kind of keep us in the queue. Hello.
How do you do, board? My name is Larry Elliott. I'm a veteran and a resident here in Newport News. And I'd just like to take the time to say that I really want to urge the school board to direct the superintendent, Dr. Michelle Mitchell, to fully replace the current policies of the outline that are outlining the policies of JB-P. And I'm advocating for the implementation of the complete 2023 model policies provided by the Yonkin Administration on the transgender issues in the schools. And these policies are pretty much are aimed to remove any suggestion of educators deceiving or concealing information from parents, especially concerning their children's exploration of gender identity at school, and emphasize that parents must be informed and given an opportunity to express their concerns before any gender-related counseling is provided to their children. And it's also to affirm that schools cannot force employees or students to express statements that go against their personal faith or conscience. Another thing is, I request that the school board to vote for revision of the policy JB, which governs the approach to transgender matters within the school district, and that these changes were established clear and enduring safeguards for fundamental parental rights and religious freedoms. I just want you to take that into consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Elliott.
Hello, school board members. My name is Natasha Elliott. I am a resident of Newport News. I'm also a graduate of Newport News system as far as high school. I just want to express my discontent on some of the board members' approval to move forward with the revision of GBAA. I want to thank the members that stood against it, Mr. Brown, Mr. Harris, and Mrs. Aiman that voted no against the revision of the GBAA. It is critical to know that addition, some of these terms of the sexual orientation of sexual identity can cause some problematic concerns. It does single out certain categories like that do inadvertently infringe upon religious freedom and freedom of speech. So I'm just hoping in the future you will reconsider these new additions to be taken back out. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Jennifer Herget.
Good evening.
Hi.
The school board, superintendent, and especially parents need to be aware that all doctors in the state of Virginia received a letter which states that the doctors are to recommend the COVID injection down to six months of age. Parents take their children to their pediatrician prior to coming back to school. Doctors get bonuses based on the percentage of their practice that is vaccinated with the COVID-19 injection. Will they give informed consent? Before the COVID-19 vaccines were rolled out, if you were 19 or younger, your risk of dying of COVID-19 was .0003%. Three per one million infected with COVID-19 at this age ended up dying. The average age of death in the UK from COVID-19 in 2021 was 82.5 years old, same as in the US, but not what we were led to believe from the media. Is anyone here aware of the Pfizer documents for the COVID-19 vaccine? I've personally spoken with five doctors, and they were unaware. The FDA tried to have the document sealed for 75 years until 2096. A Texas judge ordered the release, and the first set came out on March 1st, 2022. There are nine pages of adverse reactions that were known by February 28, 2021, over two years ago. Within these nine pages, there are approximately 40 autoimmune diseases, six types of hepatitis, 50 types of herpes. Should your immune system be compromised, your body cannot protect itself properly. To find the full document, go to www.phmpt.org, click on Documents, type in the search bar 5.3.6 for the adverse reactions, go to pages 30 to 38. Please note that these are only the side effects that were known as of February 28, 2021. The CDC had to be sued twice to release their own V-safe data. Out of approximately 10 million V-safe users, over 7.7% had a health event requiring medical attention, emergency room intervention, and/or hospitalization, and another 25% were unable to perform normal activities. Moderna also needed a lawsuit to release their data. The release started in July of 2023 and should be complete in June of 2025. What are they hiding? The good news is there were many different batches. Many have had very few reactions. You can go to howbadismybatch.com to check your batches. The Virginia Medical Freedom Alliance, along with many other organizations, are available to help the vaccine-injured. I'm a strong supporter of informed consent. I hope that this school board will help educate parents with this information. Our government and our media are not educating the public, so it is left up to we, the people. My daughter is vaccine-injured. It was very difficult finding a doctor to help her. I finally found one. She wrote a book, The Alarming Facts About the COVID Vaccine and Helpful Resources for Healing. She signed it for you, John Threep, 2021.
Thank you. Jason Parker.
Madam Chair, board members, good to see you again. I'm back to talk about responsible contracting, furnishes. We've been hoping to get ourselves a work session at some point. We would love to do that. I want to go through all the components again, but I want to remind everybody that in the state of Virginia, we're down construction workers. In the nation, we're down construction workers. And one of the components that everybody forgets when they think, well, we'll start a program, is it takes 8,000 hours for an apprentice in a registered apprenticeship. And so one of the things that we're trying to remind all the different agencies who now have the option to do such responsible contracting is that if you have the ability to do capital projects, then you are a stakeholder in the training of the workforce of the state of Virginia. And workforce development is a big push at the state level. We know they've made the Virginia Department of Workforce Development, I'm on that board, the advisory board, I'm also now on the State Workforce Development Board. This is a big push by all people. This was bipartisan legislation, and one of the things we need to do is to make sure that we are actually putting the projects out there for those young folks to become the tradespeople we need in the future. They will also go on, carry on to become various technicians and other things at NASA, shipyard, Franklin Paper Mill, including tech hubs and stuff that we're putting together right now in places like Lynchburg and other places like that. So I just wanted to come back and remind you, we're all still here. We would love to sit down and really go over this stuff, hash it out with y'all, show you the value of it. We brought you best practices. And I've heard a rumor that you guys are considering some form of working on collective bargaining with the teachers. And if that's the case, I applaud you deeply from the bottom of my heart. I know what a contract can do for working people. It's changed my life, and it's changed the life of so many of the folks I've worked with and lived around. And thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Ben Lambert.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, Dr. Mitchell. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Lynn. It is a good vantage point to have that chair. I hope you do as much with it as you can. I am sorry to be here tonight after hearing that the board will not be moving forward with responsible contracting, with considering responsible contracting. I hope that at some point in the future, you all revise that decision. It is very much at odds with what much of the rest of the state is working on right now to create a pathway to these skilled trades. And so again, I wish that that had not been your decision, and I do think it was not the best. But I would like to echo Mr. Parker's sentiments. I have been delighted to hear that you all are considering collective bargaining, and we very much hope that that moves forward and know all that it would do for the teachers. So we all hope to be back here in a few months' time to be speaking alongside our brothers and sisters in the NNEA to celebrate new resolution, giving them the right to collectively bargain for the first time in Virginia history. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jessie Robertson.
Good evening. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I take a slightly different, not view, but a different point of view on the issue that our two last speakers have spoken. I'm a union member, that much is true, but my wife's a teacher, well, was a teacher in this district. She quit. So did a lot of teachers. 96.1% fill rate. That's pretty impressive, but why the turnover? You're one of the highest-paid districts in the area. Why the turnover? It's not the money. There's something else going on here. It's the voice at work, the ability to be heard as a teacher, and have that get up not just to you guys, to the superintendent, through the principals. All of that is very important. Right now, that can break down at any point on the chain. Give them the right to collectively bargain, they have a voice. If it's not getting through the normal channels, it can get up further. Management 301, when I was taking that, remember hearing, doesn't matter how much you pay somebody, they'll stick around for another month, another year. Eventually, no, that's had enough. Made enough money, I'm getting out of it. You have to figure out what it is driving the turnover. It's not the money. Money's great, but there's something else going on, and I think collective bargaining will help with that. Now, yes, I understand it'll probably make some other problems as well, but I can't have one thing without the other. Everything's a trade-off, and that's what bargaining is. So please, I would ask that when you have the opportunity, please vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Woodard. Aaron Woodard.
Thank you, esteemed school board members. My name is Aaron Woodard, and I'm the president of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 1340, located here in Newport News, Virginia. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the amazing teachers employed in the Newport News City. As a proud football coach for Work High School and an even prouder parent of both a former and current Work IB student athlete, I've had numerous opportunities to meet and work with the teachers, faculty, and staff of our school system. I've seen firsthand the positive and direct impacts that teachers can have on these students, and I see the difference that they make in their lives. I've watched them change lives against all sorts of odds and adversity, and we ask them to teach, encourage, challenge, and inspire our children without the benefits of working under a collective bargaining agreement. As a 20-year-plus proud union electrician and now union president, I've received the wages and benefits, the safety and security of working in a union, and I credit the union with creating a pathway for my family to a career with families sustaining wages, benefits, and retirement. These amazing teachers that have helped develop and empower future generations deserve the same opportunity to have a voice in the workplace and a seat at the table when it comes to working under a collective bargaining agreement. So I encourage you, as this moves forward, if you guys would please consider allowing teachers to have the protection benefit and joy that comes from working under a collective bargaining agreement. And to speak on what some of the former speakers had said, it's... It's, it has changed my life, and it's changed my family. It's allowed us, I've never had to worry about a house, a roof over my head, food on the table, and lights at work. And these teachers deserve that same opportunity. They put theirself in not only harm's way, but give everything they've got to our future generations. And I think that they deserve the respect of having a voice and a seat at the table. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The last speaker card that I have is for Mary Voss. And I do not believe I see her. Mary Voss. I'm sure she will join us next time. Okay. So we are past the ninth hour here. I have to say, working with this board and getting to hear what their resolve is, being here for the students and making sure that they are set up for success and that they remain our focus, has definitely encouraged me this week as we get ready to open school. So I am going to stay true to the board's thought that students are the reason that we are here. And we will only hear tonight from Aaron Lynn, our new school board representative, as this is his first very long night of a meeting. Aaron, we are so happy to have you with us. What comments might you have?
So I just have a little speech. And the quote I want to use is when life gives you lemon, make lemonade. So I think this is true because as a student, every year we have hurdles to overcome or lemons thrown at us. From our rigorous classes at school to the different extracurricular activities or just events that happen in life. It has already been difficult for the past few years after coming out of the pandemic and through the unfortunate shooting of Rich Neck last school year. So as a student representative, I want to help guide students to reduce some of the stresses that can come from schools. So by the end of the year, all students in Newport News public schools can feel successful and possibly even enjoy a cold glass of lemonade to kick off their summer. So thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.